All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, April 20th, 2023 Planning Board meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Introduction to Board members, starting from the far left. We have Paul Ametucci, we have Jerry Graybill, we have Don Gennarelli, myself, Michael Lu Ru, we have Phil Roy, Matt Henry, and Cameron Hladick. We also have Iris Griffith, the Code Enforcement Officer, and we have Hannah Bonine from SMPDC. All right, now, the next thing is we have a guest presentation, Thatcher Carter from Maine Farmland Trust.
Thank you so much for having me. I think I'm going to have some slides come up on the screen shortly. Great, so yeah, my name is Thatcher Carter. I'm the Municipal Policy Associate with Maine Farmland Trust. Yeah, thanks for having me, and I'm really excited to talk tonight about some farm-friendly strategies that Maine municipalities can pursue. I'll head to the next slide. So just to begin, I wanted to give a bit of background about my position and the work that I've been doing. I began with Maine Farmland Trust in July of 2022, and since then, I've been working to update the Municipal Policy and Planning Guide that we put out called Cultivating Maine's Agricultural Future. It was originally published in 2011 in partnership with American Farmland Trust and the Maine Watch Institute, and while it's still a useful resource for towns, we are now in the process of updating it to feature new trends as well as examples of Maine municipalities actively using many of the strategies that I'm going to discuss tonight. So this updated version is coming soon, and it's being completed in collaboration with the Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry. And in addition to working on this guide, I'm also now beginning to transition into a more direct technical assistance role. And through that, I'm going to be looking to support municipalities in adopting, again, some of these farm-friendly strategies that I'm going to go over tonight. Next slide, please. So a quick overview of the presentation. I'm going to just explain what Maine Farmland Trust is, and then look to answer two key questions. Why should municipalities support agriculture, and how can municipalities support agriculture? And under that second question, I'm going to look at inventories and information gathering, different municipal planning and land use strategies, two non-regulatory land protection approaches, as well as a municipal tax program that can be adopted in Maine by ordinance, and then I'll close off with some questions and comments. Next slide, please. So Maine Farmland Trust is a member-powered statewide organization with a mission to protect farmland, support farmers, and advance the future of farming. We were founded in 1999 by a group of farmers and farm advocates, and our programs and focus areas include farmland protection and access, where we've worked to help permanently protect more than 330 farms and keep nearly 60,000 acres of farmland in farming, and our farm network, which includes farm business planning and our soil health network. We have an engagement team as well as a policy and research team, which includes me at the municipal level, as well as people working at the state and federal level as well. Next slide, please. So why should municipalities support agriculture? In order to know why, it's essential to understand what challenges are facing Maine farmland. According to the USDA Census of Agriculture, between 2012 and 2017, Maine lost more than 570 farms and roughly 10% of its farmland at about 146,000 acres. So Maine farmland is facing development pressure, and it's coming from multiple different competing land uses. So then why? Well, farms provide environmental and climate resilience benefits. Farming is, of course, a natural resource-based industry, and farmers are stewards of the land. Ensuring that farmland remains in farming is also a key natural climate solution. Undeveloped agricultural land and farmers using healthy soil practices mitigate the impacts of climate change by sequestering carbon and limiting greenhouse gas emissions. They also provide a slew of local benefits. Farmland provides a certain quality of life from the rural character that's created by natural and working lands, and a robust local food and farming system is also critical for ensuring food security for our state and region in the face of global supply chain disruptions, such as those caused by COVID-19, and which are anticipated to continue in the future as a result of climate change. Local benefits can also include recreational access, educational programming, as well as certain cultural and historical aspects as well. And finally, there are fiscal and economic benefits. Maine agriculture contributes over $3.6 billion in economic impact and supports over 27,000 jobs statewide. That's according to a 2020 report by the Farm Credit East Northeast Economic Engine. Agritourism is also on the rise in Maine, bringing new people into the community to enjoy the farm as well as other parts of town, such as local businesses and shops. And, if I could go to the next slide, please. Through cost of community service studies, it's apparent that farms also provide a fiscal benefit to towns. Local officials and residents sometimes believe that residential development will lower property taxes by growing the municipal tax base, but cost of community service studies generally disprove this. While farms may generate less tax revenue than residential properties, they require even less in the way of public infrastructure and services. So more than 30 years of studies show that farms require a median cost of $0.37 in services for every dollar of tax revenue collected, whereas residential properties require a median cost of $1.16 in services. Again, that's for every dollar of tax revenue collected. So this type of study and this perspective can be valuable when considering the benefits of pursuing municipal farmland protection strategies. Next slide, please. So now transitioning into how can a municipality support agriculture? Now that we've established some reasons for why, I want to give some tools for how. It's important to note that maybe one or a combination of these tools could work best, and there's no one-size-fits-all approach. Each municipality has unique needs and circumstances. And another thing I wanted to note is that if you hear or see something that you want more information on, such as examples of other Maine towns where you might be able to see their ordinance language, just let me know, and I'll be sure to follow up with you after the fact. Next slide, please. So the first step is often gathering information. Gathering information directly from farmers as well as collecting an inventory of known farms and farmland is a great first step in developing effective policies that will have direct impacts on local farming residents. Next slide, please. So farmer surveys are a great tool for gathering direct input from farmers and farmland owners. You can get both quantitative as well as qualitative data from them. So, for example, you can directly ask what ordinance changes could help support farmers, or what other ways could the town additionally support your farm operation, and ask sort of those open-ended, broad questions to receive feedback in that way. And on the other hand, you can also ask questions like, how much acreage are you currently cultivating? How much acreage do you own that you aren't cultivating but you could be cultivating? What types of crops do you grow? How much? And you can derive more number-based answers from that. This information can help support municipal planning efforts, such as a comprehensive plan or another independent effort. Farms and farmland inventories are another great tool for information gathering. Inventories can be basic or complex, but the goal should be to establish an understanding and a record of local farms and important agricultural soils. Prime farmland and soils of statewide significance are mapped by the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and locally significant soils are typically identified through the local soil and water conservation district. Inventories can take on a simple list or a map format, and farms can be identified through tax maps and property records, talking with local farmers, local networking, and simply also by just driving around the town. And an inventory can also be used to develop local farmland protection goals, and it can be a great starting point for understanding how much agriculture is actually going on in your town. And both surveys and inventories can also be great tools for facilitating farmland access. So you can ask farmers if they're looking for more farmland, or you can ask if they're interested in leasing their land, and you can try and make some of those farm-seeker, farm-owner connections. And finally, with information and inventorying, I also wanted to mention agricultural commissions. Those are another great tool for ensuring that farmers' voices and concerns are heard in municipal policy, though through a much more formal process. But a municipal committee like that can help to ensure that farmers' voices are heard and integrated into policy. Next slide, please. Great, so surveys and inventories can all help get a town to a point where it's able to create really effective farm-friendly policies. And now, this part of the presentation, I'm transitioning into more regulatory municipal planning and land use. That is, policy and planning strategies that a town can adopt to better support farm viability and farmers' ability to farm. And of course, we always strongly encourage consulting with a legal expert or town planner when coming up with ordinances. All of this is for informational purposes, but I'm, again, always happy to discuss more after the fact. Next slide, please. So comprehensive plans are the legal underpinning for town ordinances, and they also describe a vision for the future.
Can you talk a little lower? You know what you're talking about, but we don't.
Yes, so sorry, so sorry. So comprehensive plans, as you know, you're underway right now, are the legal underpinning for town ordinances, and they also describe a vision for the future. So therefore, to incorporate farming and agriculture effectively into a comprehensive plan, it's important to seek out input directly from farmers, perhaps using one of the tools that I just mentioned. So some general guidelines for towns creating agricultural-friendly comprehensive plans include establishing the issues and needs relevant to your local area, so not just statewide policies and goals, but finding what is specific in borough that you need to identify. And also including strong and supportive statements about farm and farming. This means capturing the full range of benefits that farms offer, not just contributions to rural character and scenery, but also viewing them as an economic engine as well. Also look to integrate agriculture throughout the plan where appropriate. So perhaps it would make sense to include goals and strategies related to agriculture not only in the agricultural and forestry section, but also in the local economy chapter, the climate change chapter, as well as the transportation chapter. Look to include policies and implementation strategies that address the full range of farm businesses and land use needs, and avoid important agricultural soils when defining a growth area. So prime agricultural soils and soils of statewide importance are the most conducive to productive farming, and only 14% of the soils in Maine are classified in these categories. That's according to the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Finally, make sure to delegate implementation to appropriate officials and have a strong implementation plan and a timeline to ensure that some of these strategies are actually enacted. So for example, some strategies you can include might be tasking the planning board with evaluating the town's existing land use ordinances and recommending changes that will help support farm operations. You could recommend that farming be integrated into a town's economic development strategy, or recommend ways that a town might assist farmers with marketing, just as one example. You could also promote the use of programs that lower farmers' tax burden, such as the current use programs through the state or the voluntary municipal farm support program, which I'll talk about more in a little bit. Next slide, please. Great, so some general guidance for farm-friendly land use ordinances. We generally really recommend looking for flexibility and good definitions. So a land use ordinance should be sufficiently flexible to allow farmers to grow and diversify their businesses, and there's a lot to consider here. Some farms generate additional income through on-farm activities, for example, maybe operating a machine repair shop. This income diversification supplements the farming income and helps the farming operation survive temporary economic downturns, so it's important that activities like this be accommodated in the ordinance. Ideally, a land use ordinance will also allow appropriate agricultural activities anywhere in a municipality, maybe with the possible exception of a downtown or a small village district, where urban agriculture could also still be defined and allowed. An ordinance's definition of farm or agriculture should include a wide array of buildings, including barns, sheds, greenhouses, hoop houses, processing facilities, as well as retail facilities. And definitions should also recognize that not all farmers share the same needs. So it's important for towns to understand the diversity of farming operations and individuals who are engaging in agriculture in their community, and ensure that the definition of farming is culturally relevant to diverse needs of local farmers. allowable farm activities in an ordinance could include raising, handling, packing, processing, storing, and direct selling of farm products, maintaining farm equipment and buildings, on-farm renewable energy production that supports the electricity needs of the farm operation, as well as non-agricultural business activities, excuse me, so long as they are compatible with farming. Land use ordinances should also recognize that farm stands and pick-your-own operations are similar in some respects to other retail establishments, but they also differ in important ways. They are seasonal and limited in scale, and some operations might generate significant customer volume for a short period of time, whereas other operations may offer a wider variety of products over a longer season. Some farms are also incorporating agritours and ventures now, and that can include tours, rides, restaurants, catering, and special events, so it's important to have those integrated into land use ordinance as well. So again, just some sort of general provisions, ordinance provisions that can really make an impact. Those include promoting new development in the growth area. That could be through smaller lot sizes, density bonuses, or other strategies. You could require that most or all new commercial activity that isn't farm-related is located in the growth area. You can avoid minimum lot sizes and road frontage requirements that would result in the splitting or fragmentation of farmland. Require that new development located next to farms be set back adequately from property lines. And also look to reduce setback requirements for certain farm structures from the roads. And this is because farm stands may need easy access and visibility to be successful, and requiring a large setback from the road can require a farmer to place a structure in the middle of their best farm soils back on the property where it may not be visible. And one tool that can be really effective in sort of wrapping together a lot of these strategies is an agricultural overlay district. A town may want to consider establishing an agricultural overlay district and then applying different ordinance standards within that zone. So agricultural overlay districts may help mitigate problems between farms and non-farming neighbors, and they can also reduce the footprint or impact of new development on farmland. Overlay zones can be identified and delineated on the basis of productive agricultural soils, which are mapped by the NRCS, or contiguous areas of active farms. And typically, the underlying district requirements remain in effect, as with most overlay zones, except as modified by the agricultural standards. So agricultural overlay districts are another way towns can allow additional agricultural-related uses by right, such as agritourism or compatible non-agricultural businesses. And towns may limit the expansion of infrastructure, such as roads and sewers into the zone, to reduce the potential for future development. Next slide, please. Another type of ordinance that can either be wrapped up into an agricultural overlay district or stand on its own is a right-to-farm ordinance. As I'm sure all of you know, at times, farming, as well as odors, slow traffic, and noise, they can all go hand-in-hand. So a local right-to-farm ordinance affirms a commitment to agriculture and identifies farming as an accepted and valued activity. So such an ordinance could be modeled after Maine's Agricultural Protection Act, which is also known as the right-to-farm law, and you can recognize and cite the definitions that are used in that law. You can describe what may be perceived as a nuisance, and then clearly state that these are protected activities, provided that best management practices are followed. It can include setback requirements that put the onus on the developer to make sure that a new residential or commercial property is set back from an active farm. You can also require a landowner that's selling property next to an active farm to provide the buyer with a notice that discloses the town's support for agriculture and the types of activities that may be associated with living directly next to an active agricultural operation. Next slide, please. Great, so I'm actually just going to hand these out to you all real quick. And what I've just passed out is something that Maine Farmland Trust has been working on a lot recently. It's our guide that looks at balancing solar development and farmland protection. So state policy changes in 2019 led to a large increase in solar development across the state. In one study, 90% of 185 proposals approved by the Maine DEP as of June 2021 intersected with prime and statewide farm soils in some way. That was a study by Maine Audubon. And in this study, only 34% of the acreage proposed for development actually covered the soils, but the analysis does help to illustrate the extent to which solar development is being approved on farmland in Maine. So Maine Farmland Trust believes that with balanced siting, solar energy generation, and agriculture can coexist in Maine in a mutually beneficial manner. And our solar siting guide compiles general guidance, municipal policy tools, and planning strategies that are all designed to help support this idea of balanced solar siting. In the guide, there's three case studies featuring the city of Auburn, the town of Topsom, as well as the town of Reedfield, so I really recommend you take a look at that. Next slide, please. And these are our general agricultural solar siting guidelines that's included in that guide on page five. I'm not going to go through them all right now, but again, on page five, you can look through those. Next slide, please. And another tool that is established by ordinance that I wanted to talk about tonight are special development fees. And development fees can be used to help fund farmland protection projects. So while fees generated from a single development are highly unlikely to generate sufficient funding, fees can be collected over time and coupled with other funds to achieve this purpose. Impact fees are established through an ordinance, and they require developers to pay a fee to offset their development's impact on a town. In creating an ordinance like this, you would want to establish clear goals and connections to protecting farmland and explicitly state that. And these fees are generally based on dwelling units or square fee proposed, so the bigger the development, the larger, in theory, generally, the fee would be. Development transfer fee programs are another tool under this sort of header of special development fees. They are established through an ordinance that defines fees, credits, transfer districts, density standards, and administrative rules. And in this instance, developers pay a transfer fee, allowing them to build more units in the growth area than would what otherwise be allowed under the existing ordinance. So towns should specify that protecting farmland is a town priority, and then the payments that are made for those density bonuses can be used to protect farmland in the designated rural area. Next slide, please. Great. And just two non-regulatory land protection approaches that I wanted to talk about tonight that can sort of wrap into ordinances sometimes, and I think also are just good to be aware of, are agricultural conservation easements as well as leasing land to farmers. So I'm sure many of you are aware of this, but an agricultural conservation easement is a voluntary, permanent, enforceable restriction that landowners place on their property, and such easements prevent subdivision as well as non-agricultural development. The property remains in private ownership, however, the easement does run with the land, and the entity that holds the easement is responsible for enforcing its terms. So that's typically a land trust, but towns are also able to hold easements as well. And towns can use permanent agricultural conservation easements by encouraging landowners to grant them, by providing funding to help pay for them. This could be through a development fee, like I mentioned earlier, another municipal funding source if it's available. It could be through a state or a federal grant program, or in a partnership with a land trust. And then secondly, leasing land to farmers is another non-regulatory approach, and municipalities may also want to see how they can promote farmland leasing opportunities in town or facilitate the leasing of town-owned land if that's applicable. So land availability and land affordability can be huge obstacles for new farmers that are looking to establish themselves, as well as existing farmers that are looking to expand their operations. If a municipality happens to own land that could be used for farming, the town could explore options to lease it out to a new or beginning farmer. And while there are many steps to this, if it's an approach that you all are interested, I'm happy to talk about it more at a later time. And finally, towns can also promote farmland leasing opportunities. So for example, a town could help increase awareness for land that's being made available by a land trust or another private landowner, and they could also do that through an inventory, like I mentioned earlier, trying to identify farm seekers as well as farm owners in the community and try and make that connection. Next slide, please. Great, and finally, I wanted to talk about a program in Maine called the Voluntary Municipal Farm Support Program. This program is outlined in state statutes, and a town can adopt this local program to lower property taxes on participating farms. So this is established through an ordinance, and through the program, farmers can receive property tax reductions in exchange for 20-year agricultural conservation easements on their land. And in this instance, the town does hold and monitor the easements. And this program can also apply to property taxes on eligible farm buildings as well as land. So it can really help support the viability of farms and protect local farmland in that way, because while the current use programs apply directly to the land, this can also apply to buildings as well. And it's great because if a municipality chooses this route, they don't need to budget for reimbursing... Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. If a municipality chooses this route, instead of acquiring funds to purchase agricultural easements, they can instead just reimburse and budget for whatever amount that they would be giving otherwise. So we'll have a great case study of Winslow's Voluntary Municipal Farm Support Program coming up in our municipal guide, and I will be sure to share that with you all when it is released. So thank you so much. I can go to the next slide, and if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them. I know that was a lot.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you, Jeremy, for being the catalyst to get this before us. I think it's important, and in our joint session, we talked about the importance of preserving, you know, our farmland and our small-town field. I think the biggest hurdle for us is if, when you're competing for getting people to put land in a trust and the grant dollars that are available and the incentives for farming, a lot of our community, our older farmers in this community are retiring, and the family tradition and the family are not taking over as farmers, and that's the biggest struggle. One of the things, if we go down this route, and I think Washington County, Maine, has learned some very hard lessons with, as it comes to leasing land for farming, when your hands are tied and you get federally subsidized programs that come in, and they're like, hey, this is a great idea, let's use this byproduct to fertilize the land, and now they're dealing with PFAS issues. So are there checks and balances in place now, hopefully, because what's going on in Washington County where you can't even harvest a deer and eat it, and you can't grow crops because we've destroyed the farmland up there? Are there checks and balances in place if we elect to go down this road and make it farm-friendly, that we still maintain control, that big industry isn't going to come in here and force our hand to use something because it's subsidized and we think it's a good idea?
I'll be honest, I don't have a great answer to that question. I know with the PFAS issue specifically, it's now no longer happening in the state, so with that specific issue, I think that...
I just worry, my big concern is, you know, roughly, if I'm not mistaken, it was seven or eight years ago, industry decided, hey, this is a great way to utilize a byproduct of the paper industry to fertilize and grow crops, which it grows crops that are great, you just can't eat them. And we've destroyed that area of our state. So I just don't want our municipality's hands to be tied because we buy into a federal program, and they tell us how our farmers or the people who are farming that land, what they have to use, and we end up owning that long term. That's my, would be my biggest concern.
Yeah, and I think it's a valid concern. I think a lot of the programs and strategies I talked about that might be great starting points would be done purely at the municipal level, so you wouldn't have to worry about that. So for example, looking through and revising your ordinances, or establishing something like a voluntary municipal farm support program, that would be under your jurisdiction, and you wouldn't have to worry about that. In terms of that bigger picture that you're talking about, I don't have a great answer, and it might be case by case, but I think it's a valid thing to bring up.
Because I hail from Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, it's probably the most richest farm country in the world, and the county itself is self-supportive because of the farms, and they do have ordinances and things. And, you know, maybe we need to, instead of reinvent the wheel, like branch out and find out what they're doing, because it's been successful down there for as long as I was growing up down there, and it's still successful.
Yeah, absolutely. I think in some instances, there's very different types of farming. So that first couple slides I went through about farm surveys and farm inventories, you know, all of the examples that I gave of what you could do are great, but really, the most effective ones are going to be, you know, effective policies are going to be derived from what the local farmers are saying. So it could end up like something like they do in Lancaster, or if you hear otherwise from local farmers, it could be something completely different. So yeah, that's why I started with that portion of the presentation, is I really think that's the foundation.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think so. All right, moving right along, we have public hearing, preliminary plan, major subdivision, Woodland Pond, Alley Pond, R7, Lot 2, and Johnny Lane, R8, 6-6, Altus End, hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
of the lots have moved. Uh, that's a lot of little nitpicking items that were little things, label this, do that, and so all those things have been addressed. Um, we did have a conversation with IF&amp;W, finally, we tracked them down. Isaiah and I had a Zoom meeting with, um, John Perry and Derek York, with the turtle guy. And he had a couple of comments, they had a couple of comments, there's a copy of the correspondence, uh, with them, uh, in the packet. Uh, basically, they don't have a lot of jurisdiction here, but they did make some suggestions that we could make the project a little bit better, more palatable for, uh, the black racer snakes and, as well as the turtles in the neighborhood. Um, the biggest one is this section of Lot 4 here, uh, they wanted a no-cut restriction on the back of it, which we've done, you can see that on the plan, so this about half the lot is now not going to be cut, it's going to stay as is. Um, they wanted us to reach out to, um, Great Works Land Trust about perhaps taking an easement over the open space. Um, we did reach out to them, we had a little conversation, and they kind of want something weird, I've never run into it. Um, they want a separate lot between the house lots and their conservation easement. So that they're budding one owner, in this case, the HOA versus 11 homeowners, which doesn't, it's not really workable, uh, unfortunately. I mean, I tried to do a layout, it just doesn't fit. Um, so I don't think that's going to happen, um, unfortunately. Uh, we did add some turtle crossing signs, uh, per Derek's suggestion at three locations throughout it. Um, he mentioned they could be seasonal, where if you've got turtle breeding season where they're moving around, they could be covered up. He was going to get me a detail on that, but he hasn't. But there is a turtle sign in the packet that you guys have seen. Um, let's see, what else? That was pretty much it. He did say logging could continue in the open space. He said that's actually good for the black racer snake, which I was really surprised to hear. Um, we have no intention of doing that, but the HOA could do so if they wanted to in the future for whatever reason. Um, it's not restricted right now in the HOA documents. Um, I don't know if you guys have a preference on that or not. Uh, we can restrict it or allow it, it's, I don't see an HOA doing it, to be honest with you. Um, it did say paving the road is actually a good thing because turtles don't want to crawl across a road, and they certainly don't want to nest there, which is what we had in this instance when the roads were gravel. Um, the only other change is I've added the turnaround, which I talked about before, as well as an apron, uh, at the dry hydrant, where the fire truck would pull off, hook it on the dry hydrant, uh, which we're going to replace in its entirety, and have a little way of place to back up. This little backup area was actually supposed to be built back in 2006, I think. Um, it never got constructed, so this is sort of, you know, rehatching that. Um, so we're going to go ahead and do that, that way a fire truck's not going down there to a dead end, uh, which this is, because we do have a gate right here now, um, that's going to be double-leaf gate, the fire department will have access to it, we'll have a Knox, Knox box there that they can open the gate if they need to get through. Um, what else? Oh, the replacement of the dry hydrant itself, I did file a PBR with DEP for that, uh, we do have a little bit of wetland impact right in through here, it's temporary, obviously we're just going to find the old pipe, dig it up and replace it with a new one, that also went to the Army Corps. Um, in that same correspondence to the Army Corps, I asked about the two culver crossings that were done, uh, that need to be replaced and haven't heard back yet. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, I think the packet and the application are complete. Uh, there's one waiver ahead of you guys right now, it's for the road intersection. Uh, the rules stipulate that you can't have 3%, uh, a road exceeding 3% in either direction for 75 feet from the intersection. In this case, I've got about three going this way and about four and a half to five coming down in here. I've got a great shot, a picture of it that I can show you guys from, shot from here. The reason they, they want that is for site distance, and the picture shows that there's more than adequate site distance. Plus, this road's coming from nowhere, where if you're not going to come through the gate, crash through it and go off the intersection, you just can't. The only, only, uh, vehicle to be coming out that way would be a fire truck, and everybody is going to get out of the way anyway. Uh, so I really don't see that from an engineering perspective to be an issue, um, at all. I mean, I can send that photograph around if you guys want to take a look, uh, but it's, it's, in this particular case, it's nonsensical. So that is a shot from approximately the dry hydrant area, uh, looking up towards the intersection. So you can see there's no site distance issue at all. Irish, I could send that to you for the file.
Okay, thanks, please.
Thank you, Cameron.
All right, well, it's a porous pleasure.
Well, now we'll just see if anyone has any, uh, comments to make, and then we'll close it.
Do you want your picture?
Do you want it? Put it on the fridge?
Give me such pretty pictures. I mean, look, it's a lovely dirt road.
That was, that was last fall, the grass was just popping, so it's bright green.
I got the bright green, the browns, the real earth tones going.
She couldn't make it. Yeah, she told me last week that she couldn't make it. Um, okay, well, then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, we're going to open up the first public comment for non-agenda items. If you want to come up, just state your name and your address. Nope. Okay, we'll close that, and moving along, um, we're going to do the approval of minutes. We have two, one that we didn't approve last meeting because we didn't have a quorum for it. Um, I was, um, out that on that meeting, so March 2nd, 2023.
I'll make a motion, uh, we, I had previously reviewed them, we did not have a quorum last time, but, uh, I see no reason we should not approve the minutes as drafted.
I'll second that.
Okay.
They were amended though, right?
As far as I know, there was one thing...
There was a question on there about being amended?
I think so. I'll double-check that, so just put it as with amendments.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. Um, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and all you guys are here? No, Matt, you weren't here, so you're abstaining? Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, okay. All right. Next is the March 16th, 2023 minutes. Uh, we had them via email, yep.
Yeah, that was your 11th hour, minutes that got emailed out.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve them, as written.
Okay, I'll second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Abstaining.
All right, and then we have three abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, next, moving along, in old business, preliminary plan, major subdivision, Woodland Pond, Alley Pond, R7, Lot 2, and Johnny Lane, R8, 6-6, Altus Engineering.
Thank you.
You've got more pictures for me?
I don't have any more, I'm sorry. I've got tons of them, I've got the whole site. Um, well, I just made my presentation, so I guess...
Yeah, no, it seems like you've covered everything that was of concern.
Yeah, any questions?
The, I, the one thing that I don't have, and usually we'll get, um, a summary from, like Hannah or Lee J., is for the waiver and stuff, so I just don't know...
Yeah, I didn't write much about it. Um, I, I recommended that it be approved, especially based on that picture. The only question I have about that is, you're saying this is a dirt road that leads to nowhere. Is that always going to lead to nowhere? Do we not know that?
Who, who knows? Um, I, I have no idea, um, what could happen with this in the future. I know it does get pretty wet once you get past it. Um, if it were to, let's say, be developed at some point in the future, I would recommend that you make this a three-way stop, and that way it eliminates the, or the site distance issue altogether. And right now, it's, this is a throughway, but you're going through to nowhere.
Right.
Um, and you have a stop sign going this way.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a big grade difference from, from the thing, but since part of it is, it's going to nowhere, if we just want to...
Okay.
Sure, other than that.
All right.
Yeah, sure, Ben.
And on sheet C3, your 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, your eighth bullet point, uh, we disagree with the reviewer and have not added proposed contours. Um, there's a lot of legal jargon in there, can you, can you break it down for simple people like myself?
Let me pull that up. Sheet C3.
Okay, this is talking about the profile. Um, a lot of engineers will put existing proposed contours on their road profiles. I tend to think it's clutter, because I, I use the profile to be a layout plan. Here's where your curves are and what the curve length is and what the radius is, things of that nature, where your stop signs are and your paint. If you add all this other, I don't want to call it junk, but stuff on top of that, the plan becomes really difficult to read. In this case, I added a separate grading and drainage plan, so those contours are in the plan set, they're just on a separate sheet.
Okay.
So it sort of, sort of separates those two things, it makes, makes an extra page, but I think it makes the plan easier to follow. And that's just a personal choice.
That makes sense, thank you. It was, it was difficult to pick that out in the verbiage.
Sorry about that.
Nope, no worries.
Okay. So Hannah, would the first, um, action be to grant that we're, go for that motion for the waiver and then the, um, approval for the preliminary application?
Have we, are you, uh, voted on completeness yet?
Yes, and we've scheduled the site walk and the public hearing, so we just didn't know about the waiver until now.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll do that. Um, I just don't have the information in front of me for what the waiver...
It is a waiver of Article 12, Section 2, Table 12.2-3, of the minimum grade within 75 feet of an intersection. Which is wordy, so I don't know how you want to present it, but I can repeat that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, okay.
I don't know if the memos just didn't get included in your...
Yeah, yeah, I think it came with the email, I just, it's just not here right now. All right, thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver of Article 12, Section 2, Table 2-2.2-3, maximum grade within 75 feet of intersection.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was 12.2-3.
Yeah, sorry, 12.2-3, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the next is, um, just the motion to approve the preliminary application.
I will make a motion that we, we're, we're looking for completeness, or...
Um, the, just to approve the preliminary application.
I, I will make a motion that we approve the preliminary application.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, okay.
Between now and final, is there anything you guys want to see on the plan that's not there? Any other little bits of clarification that you think would help? Speak now if ever hold your peace.
The, the drainage, uh, plan, that, that is its own sketch, correct?
The grading and drainage, yes, that's, that's, I believe it's sheet C5, I think?
Okay.
Check that.
I think that was the only thing we had in the last go.
Grading and drainage is C4.
And Irish, do you have anything that you'd like added on that, or...
You know, I'm kind of more, I'm kind of more partial to blues, but...
I'll find a big shot of the pond this time.
No, I think, I think, uh, the, the changes that were made in her guides to wildlife is really what I was looking for, so. Um, I, I do have one question for you, though, you did say that they're going to let you know if those turtle signs can be covered at times of the year.
Yeah.
Will you notify me when you get that information?
Yep, absolutely. I mean, they, they can stay up all year round, they just had this, I guess in some places they have like a little, half the sign folds up when the turtles aren't migrating or, or whatever. I don't really see the need for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just leave them there.
Yeah, everybody will watch for them slowly.
It was one of their things, I'm like, okay.
Perfect.
Yep, all right, well, thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along into new business, site plan review, commercial storage, one Blackmore Road, R6818, Blackmore Road LLC.
Hey, everyone, uh, my name is Kevin Poehn from, uh, Berry Surveying and Engineering. I'm, uh, representing Blackmore Road LLC, uh, for the proposed addition of, uh, two storage unit buildings on TaxMap R68, uh, Lot 18. Um, the subject parcel is about seven and a half acres consisting of, uh, a few wetlands along the Driscoll Brook, and, uh, is primarily a nice sandy soil. Um, the parcel is located within the rural commercial industrial zone, and there are three existing buildings on site. Um, so the proposal includes the addition of two, uh, prefabricated steel construction storage buildings. Um, I believe one is 11,000 square feet and the other is just over 3,000. Um, this land use requires a conditional use permit, uh, which is part of the application before you today, and a second additional, uh, conditional use permit that is requested is for, um, uh, filling of greater than 10 cubic yards within 75 feet of the Driscoll Brook, so within the stream, uh, protection district. That disturbance, I believe, is about 1,500 square feet, I'd have to double-check that. Um, so stormwater, uh, going to be treated and infiltrated in a series of infiltration basins. Um, these infiltration basins will be treating flow for the proposed impervious surface, um, as well as the, uh, portion of the existing gravel driveway and existing buildings as well. Um, there is, uh, two proposed conveyance soils, uh, for the proposed impervious that protects, uh, the Driscoll Brook from direct runoff. And as part of the proposal, uh, there is no, uh, water or sewage connection proposed as these are two prefabricated steel structures. And, uh, that's what I have for the board.
Sorry, that went, that came out as pretty fast. Sorry about that. No, no worries. Um, so you're requesting a waiver of the stormwater management requirement? Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, there are no waivers being requested.
Oh, no waivers?
No waivers are being requested. Uh, there are two, two, uh, my apologies.
No worries.
Um, there's two conditional use permits being requested, um, one of which is the storage use facility within the rural commercial industrial zone, and then the second conditional use permit is filling of greater than 10 cubic yards within the 75-foot stream protection zone. And that, uh, 75-foot stream protection zone disturbance occurs in one location. Um, there is no impervious surface, uh, proposed within 75 feet, that 75-foot is the grading for a conveyance soil, uh, to route stormwater to an infiltration basin. I'm sorry, that, uh, my apologies, that's, uh, stream protection zone impact is 3,281 square feet, and I believe it is... And then filling of 133 yards of earth within that zone for the creation of this conveyance soil. And that is the red-hatched, uh, the red-shaded area on the plan.
Hannah, procedural leave? Uh, personally, I, I just feel, I, us...
Sorry, that went, that came out as pretty fast. Sorry about that. No, no worries. So you're requesting a waiver of the stormwater management requirement? Did I hear that correctly?
No, I'm sorry. There are no waivers being requested.
Oh, no waivers.
No waivers are being requested. There are two, my apologies.
No worries.
There's two conditional use permits being requested, one of which is the storage use facility within the rural commercial industrial zone. And then the second conditional use permit is filling of greater than 10 cubic yards within the 75-foot stream protection zone. And that 75-foot stream protection zone disturbance occurs in one location. There is no impervious surface proposed within 75 feet. That 75-foot is the grading for a conveyance soil to route stormwater to an infiltration basin. I'm sorry, that, my apologies, that stream protection zone impact is 3,281 square feet and I believe it is. And then filling of 133 yards of earth within that zone for the creation of this conveyance soil. And that is the red hatched, the red shaded area on the plan.
Hannah, procedurally, personally, I just feel us relaxing standards near waterway is such a bad precedent moving forward. Would we be within our right to ask for a third-party review to understand, fully understand the impact of what they're asking for? Grant that what the potential impact could be? Is that within our purview?
If you want to, yeah.
I just want to make sure it's within our purview and I don't want to put an undue burden on the applicant, but if it deals with a stream, I feel very strongly that we should condition that. Is this the appropriate time?
Yes, yes.
I would like a motion that if we are to approve the request for your conditional piece for the stream, that you would get a third, independent third-party reviewer to evaluate the impact of the facility as it relates to the stream and provide us with content on that.
That would just be a condition.
A condition, correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that. Yeah, we don't have to vote.
We'll just add that to the conditions, correct?
Okay.
Right now, it's, right now, we're just basically looking at it and finding if the application is complete.
Yes.
We just want to make sure that everything's there. But yes, that would be. We have had a couple other people that were touched to waterways and.
We've done that.
No, we've denied them. Yes, so this is other, this is a different type of business where they're not going to be tapping into water or having runoff issues. So having a third party wouldn't be that bad to take a look at it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just for clarification purposes, the current uses on the property are still going to stay that way? This is just additional uses?
That is correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that earlier. Thank you.
Do you have anything, Hannah?
Formulating a question.
Okay.
The current uses is, what are we, storage garage and marijuana cultivation facility? When was, when were those approved? Do you know?
I do not have the answer to that question currently.
Is that, is that a use that's going to happen on this property?
That's, that was, that's the current use of the structures that are already there.
Okay.
So these would be additional uses on top of that. So it's just wondering when that first approval was. Just for backlog.
I don't think we did.
No, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just making sure. I'm like a time traveler.
Yeah.
And this use is going to be complete and separate from the other uses as a, run as a separate business, not part of what's happening there now?
You got to speak into the microphone, sorry. This is for the people that are watching on TV. If you want to, just come and state your name and then answer the question.
Dennis Robillard, they're going to be mini storage buildings, 10 by 20. And the second building is going to be a mini storage building, but they're going to be built a little bit bigger. They're going to be.
Excuse me, could you speak louder?
They're going to be 12 by 40 feet deep.
Okay.
And there's only going to be four of those in that larger building. It's a taller building.
Are you the owner, the developer, sir?
I'm the owner.
The owner, quick. Thank you.
So the, this development has nothing to do with finding more storage capacity for, let's say, the marijuana.
No, sir.
Cultivation or that sort of thing?
No, sir.
Okay, so there's no interchange between one business and the other?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? No.
At this time, thank you. Just to find the application complete. Nope, we're going to do that, that's later.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
I got you.
That's when we set the conditions.
Yep, thank you.
So what would happen is once this is, the application is found complete, then we do the site walk and the public hearing. So this is just to say that their paperwork is correct and that's it.
Anything you, else you need to see, Iris, for, as it pertains to the application?
So you don't want me saying more greens and browns? No.
Well, you didn't bring colorful pictures, I'm sorry.
There is some red on there.
There is some red. So I got red this time, okay? Okay, bring some, we'll bring some crayons. No, I, I don't think I have anything else, Hannah.
Just to clarify procedurally, you'll find the application complete or not, but find the application complete, then set the dates for the site walk, public hearing, and then in the meantime, between now and the next meeting, that's when we'll get the third-party review done. So that'll be for when they come back.
Great. Perfect. With that, I will make a motion that we find the application complete. I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So site walk and public hearing. I know the planning has been a little busy, so is it two weeks? Is two weeks going to be good enough or should we try and go for the, the third? Because right now, let's look at the calendar.
I think.
Yeah, so. Okay, so we would be looking at the 18th of May?
Unfortunately, probably.
Okay.
Just because I don't, I don't think I would trust it with mail the way it is to be able to get the notice.
Yeah, because we've had some issues with previous ones. That's why we're just trying to.
Yeah, James and I discussed that a little bit earlier and pushing it out a little bit to make sure that we have time to get those notices properly delivered.
Okay. Okay, so May 18th?
What time do you guys want that?
5:00, yeah. Does 5:00 work for you guys? Yeah? Yeah, okay, 5:00.
5:00 PM and then we'll meet you guys for the.
Yeah, and if you could just like stake out where the proposed building's going to be and stuff like that, that's just so we can see.
The proposed building and I would request that you stake out the area that's going to be the.
The wetlands.
Potential fill for that second conditional use.
Yep.
If you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving along is the next public comment. Open for non-agenda items.
Could I speak on, on this item?
Pertaining to?
To the One Blackmore Road building agenda.
Yeah, I was just kind of asking like the subject to it, like, is it for the public hearing time or for the?
No, it's a, it's a comment. I live on Blackmore Road.
If, are you, so like in a butter?
Yes.
Then no, we will wait till the public hearing time. So that will be May 18th.
18th, May.
Yeah, and then that's your time to speak.
And as in a butter, you will receive notifications from the town of that date and time, sir.
Yep.
And you know where to find me. He's come and asked me a few questions previously for different things, so.
Okay, yep. All right, so the second public comment is open for non-agenda items. If you could just state your name and address.
My name is Pat Bover and I live at Sixth Country Lane. And we had written a letter that James forwarded to, to the town manager, forwarded to, I think, the town planner about working on performance standards for gas stations and convenience stores and a variety of other things. And I was just wondering if you received the letter and if you were working on those things.
Yes, yes, we have been talking with James about those.
And Pat, I did also send him my, my first rough drafts of those ordinances that I had drafted. So it's, it's in, it's in the works.
Yeah.
Between James and I and Hannah, we're.
Trying to stay on top of things moving along.
No, I, I understand and appreciate that, but we're not going to forget about it, I assure you.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Bover, if it provides you any, any measure of comfort too, I know, no, I know myself and a couple other board members, we have taken the time to review both the state and the federal standards because we're kind of getting smart on this as we go as well.
Yeah.
And any forthcoming applicant will be held to those standards. And I think as we previously told you, we are allowed to further condition any applicant if we so desire. And it will be highly scrutinized just due to the nature of the business. So I, I hope you have faith in our abilities and.
I definitely have faith in you.
Okay, so we will, we will do our due diligence, ma'am.
Yes, I guess, I was just coming from the point that noticing some things that the land use ordinance can use to get beefed up and be more important, not just gas stations, but other issues also. And that rather than, I felt kind of bad, Iris, that you were kind of making them up. I don't know if you were trying to get them from other places.
Basically, what I did was I did, part of, part of doing any sort of good ordinance is getting, yes, reviewing other municipalities ordinances, which it's very difficult to find fuel station ordinances. So managed to find a few. I was doing that solar, I was doing a few things because you're right, there is, there are some things, I mean, as we grow, that should be added, changed, what have you. And then I just kind of, I put all of the thoughts and all of the concerns that have been addressed into, into those performance standards and drafted a couple of them and sent them off to James and he played with them and sent them back to me and I played with them. And I think Hannah's probably, if you haven't seen them, will be seeing them. So, you know, we're making progress. And yes, you're right, there's a lot in the land use ordinance that probably could use beefing up, but that's going to be kind of winter project for a lot of the other things to be able to get on the next year's ballot.
Obviously, things are very busy.
Yes, yeah, well, you have no idea.
Also, I guess I was just kind of wondering, I was surprised to hear that you were doing that because that isn't really what a CEO does. So that's why I, that's why I thought it was important that it get forwarded to a town planner because you have enough stuff to do as a CEO.
Yes, I do. That having been said, you know, I've only been with the town for about five or six months now. You guys are all going to learn exactly what our board and my boss has learned, which is that I'm not queen of staying in my lane, so to speak. If there's a need, it needs to be addressed and there's nobody available to do it, I will jump in and do that. And although it may seem unusual for a code enforcement officer to be willing to do that, I, my whole job, well, half of my job, half of my job is from the state, the other half is from the land use ordinances. So it, to me, it's just, it's part of my job. I have to enforce these things, so why not participate in the writing and upgrading of them? Because when push comes to shove, you know, let's say I stepped out of it completely right now and Hannah wrote the entire ordinance and then our boards go ahead and they vote them all through, the townspeople vote on them, everything's great, they condition these things, if somebody's not doing what they're supposed to, who is everybody calling? So I have to know the ordinance is inside and out anyway, so I may as well step in from the front. And that way I can make sure that things are worded and presented, the things that people commonly have concerns about, that they contact me about, those are things I can ensure get added to the ordinances. That's also part of why I will be much more of an active participant at these meetings as per my conversations with the board because there are certain things that tend to come back on later on for site plans or subdivision plans that are common complaints that I, if we have them on the plans to begin with or in our ordinances to begin with, it gives me the teeth I need to do my enforcement. So for me, it makes sense for me to be actively involved in all those portions.
I think it sounds like a good plan that you are working with James and then you go to Hannah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm not the last step, I'm the first step.
No, I mean, I think having everyone involved is probably very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you for being involved and engaged and holding us accountable.
Yes, thank you. And, and I will admit, you know, by, by me and James kind of working on this at the front end before we pass it to Hannah, it's less of her hours and saves the town a little bit of money because we do have to, we have to pay her handsomely, so.
All right, any other public comment? Nope, all right, close that. And next is informational items.
This is where they all stare at me and I get the deer in headlights look. Hey Hannah, anything informational for you?
Not that I know.
Well, we've got applications rolling in. Oh, oh, I get to give you guys my happy update. So we will have a new, contract was signed today, so I'm sure James is okay with me saying this and if not, I'm sure I'll hear about it on Monday morning, but as of May 15, yeah, May, next month, I'm not saying I've been a little overwhelmed. As of May 15th, we will officially have a new administrative assistant for codes and planning. And I can tell you, I, I won't out her name just yet, but I can tell you, I happen to know this individual, it's somebody I've worked with in the past. She has previous experience as an administrative assistant in a very busy planning and code office. So, excuse me, happy dance for me. It's about to get a lot easier. She, I will still, obviously, as we discussed last time, want to be here and as I just said, want to be here for these meetings. I enjoy, I enjoy the company, the knowledge and the ability to throw my two cents into the ring. But she will come for a few and get to know everybody and how things work and, and I think you guys will like her. I think it's going to work out pretty well.
It's good news.
I am, that is like the best informational item I've ever been able to drop on somebody. We do have a project I emailed you guys today. So we're currently having fun with the San Villa Estates of the South Barwick. Well, we're going to be doing that, but on the other side of town, there is an application that has been presented to North Barwick. I emailed you guys out today and actually have not received the correct agenda. The agenda that came with the email was last week's agenda, but I'm sure he'll, he's just as frazzled as the rest of us, so I'm sure he'll get that to us. But there is going to be another project with North Barwick. I don't even know if I told you about that one yet.
No.
I hope I've got you on my planning board email list, but, so it's a, David Springer has a subdivision he's proposing in North Barwick. This one is a little bit different than what we've got going with South Barwick because this one actually has, I believe, I've looked at the plans, five lots in Barwick. So there will be actually like development as opposed to the other one, which is just a new press issue. So that is something that they are meeting next week about. That was in the email. I don't know if anybody or everybody's going to be available, but I assume standard operating rules apply that we have to make a quorum in order to be able to get a vote. But since we have the privilege of having the lovely Hannah here, does that matter at the, at the first meeting?
It's a great question.
Will you get back to me on that? I will not put you on the spot on that, I rather.
Considering the fact that we're also the planner for North Barwick and I didn't know about it, I'll get back to you.
Okay, well, then Matt's got some splainin' to do.
Yes.
Do you have any early read ahead on that, whether that's going to be public water and sewer or private?
I think it's going to be private.
That's private.
It is private, okay.
That is private.
Our three area first.
Because that would introduce its own unique set of challenges, I'm sure.
Yes, no, full disclosure, prior to this being submitted to North Barwick, I did speak with the develop, somebody from the developers, that the developer had contracted. And he basically just had some questions as far as, A, how we should go about the submittal. And I did explain to him that what we were doing with South Barwick and that we can in fact do that this way as well, rather than breaking it into two. And then there was a question about open space, which we actually ended up with answers from Lee Jay and Hannah for him, that he needed those answers in order to be able to put together his submittal for Mr. Sp- together his submittal for Mr. Springer and, and put that in, so, uh, I just always try to be as transparent as possible to do it.
So, five, excuse me, five of these lots will be in Barwick, how many are in North Barwick?
23, I believe.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it's, it's...
It's a lot of acreage. It's over 100 acres.
It's a massive parcel, it's a very large project, um, but, again, very minimal impact into Barwick, just like the North Barwick one, so, uh, if you guys could let me know when you get a chance to check your emails and just shoot me back, let me know if you guys can make it to that, uh, meeting, um, I want to say it's next Wednesday, and again, I only bring in the...
It's next Thursday, the 27th.
Thursday, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, see?
Bring my birthday cake, please.
Oh.
Is that your birthday? Yes, it is. Oh, my God.
Ah.
Cake.
You know, you just, you just give me too many weapons here. I always show up, I'll carry the cupcake covered with candles and, uh, I don't know, has one of you guys ever been a volunteer firefighter that can carry the fire extinguisher?
Ooh, wow, shots fired, sure.
Well, they told me that was the geriatric side, so if I'm going to put them on a cupcake, that's what's said.
It is, but I would like to remind you, it's also the best looking side.
I'm staying right out of that one.
All right, moving along, any other further...
I don't need to get fired for sexual harassment at a planning board meeting.
Any other further informational items?
I think that was about...
Do you want to say anything about last night's meeting for those who weren't there?
Oh, yes, so, um, do you want to take that one, Hannah? For the, do you want to say anything, you want me to start?
You can start.
Hannah, you're as good at being put on the spot as I am, I get used to it from James. Um, so last night we went, we had the meeting on San Villa Estates, basically gate is gone, that's been decided as a, a no-no, um, we are, there were some wonderful suggestions given to, um, Mr. Wood, Ken, uh, about what some possible other options are, because the concern is obviously still mixing industrial traffic with, you know, residential, um, so some of the things that were proposed are perhaps making the, the little stretch between the development and the town line a one-way only, um, or some sort of, you know, speed restriction or weight limit restriction, something to kind of mitigate that. Um, but basically it was determined that, you know, it, it's got to be a second egress, and having a gate there just doesn't really make a whole lot of sense in the overall safety scheme. Um, we're going to just have everything kind of roll through conditions on their, their side, um, we do have to, yeah.
I'm assuming we will get plans for the roadway improvements at some point, because I haven't seen those yet, um, so I assume those will be forthcoming, um, I'm curious as to how they're going to treat the cul-de-sac, um, but I guess we will see.
Hannah, am I being overly naive in, in my assumption that the development of that, or the improvement of that road, is that incumbent upon the developer, or is that incumbent upon the town?
That is the developer.
It is, okay.
Yes, by using that road as their access point, they need to improve it.
Okay, great.
And set it to town standards, which we have updated our standards.
Even better, we've updated our standards, so have yours.
Nice, Phil, I'm not the only one. So does, uh, something that I was looking at today, and I, I've been kind of all over the place, does the owner of that, does, does McProperty Management also own Industry Drive, that end of it? Because I know they own a parcel on that end.
I think they did it at one point, but I don't know what the current ownership is.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
They do, they own a parcel on that end, I know.
Yes, yeah, a lot of it.
Okay, so it would probably be incumbent on them to begin with, so...
But they're not here, so we can't really talk that much about them.
No, I was just curious of ownership, but thank you for keeping me in my place, Mr. Chair.
The only other thing that I didn't get to add last night, and Jerry and I talked about it, was either a light or a flashing caution light on Route 4, too, because you, not only you have industrial vehicles coming out of there, you're going to have, um, civilian cars coming out of there, and you sort of turn lanes...
School buses.
School buses coming out of there. So, it would probably be good to, so if I forget the next time, please remind me.
I've written it in here, Hannah's making a note, and I think that would probably come to the, be an addition when we have the traffic study.
There is a pending traffic study, too.
It's already, uh, I talked to James yesterday, and he said...
Uh, yeah, I think the DOT survey would probably address that, but we'll, we can make sure, uh, that's the other thing that was discussed, is that when we do another meeting, there will be a, the traffic study person will be there to answer all of our questions, so if you guys aren't able to make it, shoot us, shoot somebody, one of us, your questions are propositions.
That's on May 3rd, 5 o'clock, so walk through.
Yes, the sidewalk.
And the meeting's at 7.
Yes, and the sidewalk we're meeting on, uh, our end of Industry Drive, and we're going to walk through, and Hershey told us to make sure we wear muck boots and remember it's tick season.
Yes.
Those are key points.
It was a very wet area over there.
Yes, yes, it is.
I remember that with the, uh, the cement processing place, that sidewalk was kind of wet.
But I believe that was most everything of importance for those of you that weren't able to attend.
I think so. The only vote per se was, it wasn't an official vote, but it was the gate.
Yeah, it was a show of hands. Yes, Jerry?
You're going to notify the people on Industrial Drive?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I've already got the abutters notices drafted, they just need to be sent out.
Thanks.
And I'm working all weekend, so...
They'll go.
It's going to be an interesting public hearing.
I think if we didn't clue down, there would be trouble.
Oh, no, there's, I'm doing the abutters there, and I do apologize, Paul, I was just teasing about the fire extinguisher. No disrespect to that, no disrespect to the...
He's already lawyered up.
Probably. Damn, I'll go pack my office.
Type it under the table.
If there are no, uh, further items for discussion, uh, from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Barwick Town Hall, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night.